In aerobics first, or are we?
Sneakers are in now.
I try to be humorous here, Carol. Charlie's out of state.
You're live.
What is this grill here?
It's looking good.
Ever since Omicron, it just looks that way.
Are we on?
Yes. I said you're live. No one listens to me ever.
All right, we are live. Good evening and welcome to the Village Board, Village Webster Board Meeting for February 10th, 2022. If you would stand with me and put a pledge. And Carol, would you lead us?
Flag donates to the flag.
Hey, Al Marcius.
All right, first of all, I guess we would like to open up for public comments from the audience. If there is anybody that would like to address the board this evening. Podium, come to the side, state your name. And what you would like to discuss and talk to us about. All right. I believe that that will... We don't have anybody who would like to address the board this evening, so we'll close that part of the meeting. For the public hearings, we need to wait until 7:10 for those. So we will move to the scheduled agenda. And we will start, first of all, with a resolution to approve the minutes from January 27. Anybody have any comments, additions?
Just to note that I was not here.
That's true.
We will note then a change. Mr. Swinley was not present, but he has mayor by his trusty Lancy. Now, anything motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Trusty Ibelito?
Aye.
Trusty Balcane? Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Trusty Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next we have the motion to approve claims and warrants. I had an opportunity to look that over today. And the question that I asked Jake was fund on the $12,000 to the town for sewer Blue Heron Construction on emergency bypass down there. And my question was answered satisfactorily to me, so.
What was the answer?
What was the answer? Carol and I were...
How was Jake explaining that?
It was a... Some time ago, we had, we were approached by the town about getting a new motor for Tricky. No longer term, so getting a motor was a great idea. So we talked, and I talked about different options. And there was a subcutane tube. This is a pre-mounted subcutane tube. So if we ever need to bypass tires, we can go down there and hook up a big 12-inch pump to it and pump it anywhere these go on their plan. But that, you know, the big, large size to accommodate our clothes.
So it's definitely just a village? Because I know the amount that they gave the town. I just wanted to be sure.
Yeah, this was completely separate from that. That was just in our wet well down there. There was a bypass. And this is something that they actually finished, about 90% of it except for the plan, a couple of months ago. And we talked to them a couple of weeks ago. I said, hey, where's this last plan? And they said, just came in, they're gonna put it on. They did, and very quickly billed us.
For the record, Mayor Byers, Jake promised me, promised, before the meeting, he would turn the mic on, and he did not. And we literally moved it and pulled it closer to him so he could sit over there. He didn't want to sit next to you, Carol. I don't know why.
I'm trying to do more than this.
It does project fairly well.
He does, but the camera doesn't pick it up.
Carol, do you have anything that I know you looked at those?
That was the only one that I was concerned about.
I was looking at you too, because I thought it was my turn.
I just realized, Carla, your glasses wouldn't go better with June's outfit.
Oh, we can change glasses every quarter.
I don't even know what he's gonna... I just noticed they're cheating friends. At least I can see it out of them. That's good. You should see my good ones.
If there are no other questions, I would ask for a motion to approve the...
I'll make that motion.
Trusty Lancy?
Aye.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Trusty Balcane?
Aye.
Trusty Ibelito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next...
So what do we have here?
What do we have?
Alan T., you didn't want to review this? We'll change the plans here.
That there was something that was at the board meeting, I think, that I missed. But that was something that the office has come back and said that they would like, at this particular point, to continue with LMT because of the fact that the prior rep that they had talked to is no longer there. And the rep that they are now dealing with, they were not comfortable with.
So that rep left?
Were not comfortable in terms of what they have proposed. They really haven't proposed. They told them...
So that rep left?
Yes, I believe so.
That after our board meeting that night was... Fast access?
Just before.
But we didn't know. Yeah, and they couldn't give us a straight answer on price. We just... I didn't feel comfortable.
So in discussing this with members out of the front office staff, they concur that they feel more comfortable continuing with LMT at this particular point in time.
So should we get, just for argument's sake, right? If we had two vendors we were comparing, and one we clearly chose to go with and voted for, then we decided not to do that. You were obviously choosing them for a reason over LMT. Should we be getting another, another organization to compare to LMT? Because I'm just confused by, seems like we're pretty sold on it. And then, just because the rep fell off the face of the earth and lost it 24 hours? What are the other reasons? I'm assuming you weren't just going with them just because you liked the rep. Had to be the services they were providing, correct?
Well, initially, we weren't, Don wasn't happy with the contract with them. And that was a year ago. And then, we, you guys asked us to get more quotes. It was a very quick turnaround. We did, we got, went with him. But they couldn't give us straight answers. And we feel as if we're going to lose service with this. And it could cost more, because they're not going to be coming out hands-on and doing things like that. We don't have experience with IT in the office.
No, no, I get that.
And we're not switching companies.
But I want to understand is we were choosing them over LMT. So something about them was better.
The cost was better.
No, that's, you suggested we would move with LMT. And then the board took your opinion and the contract and the numbers and made a decision.
I suggested to go with LMT and switch later, but no one liked that idea. That was my suggestion.
No?
It doesn't seem to answer your question.
No. It's just like, are we just settling for this now? Because the other one fell through with, it seemed like we were leaning the other way. And just, there had been something that was selling us a little bit more than just the price.
Yeah, because when I talked to you, it sounded like you couldn't get enough information from them.
We like LMT, but every, every meeting, the board members are, you know, you'd get lower costs, we'd get lower costs. But we're happy with the service. I like LMT. I'm comfortable with them. They're there when we need them, and it's a very serious matter. You know, we don't want any breaches and things like that. And I feel more comfortable. I apologize that I didn't, I wasn't more clear on that in the last meeting. But I am more comfortable with LMT at this time. So it's my request. I would like to stay with them. I, we have a good rapport with them. Yes, they're more responsive. But they do a great job.
They know what our system is. I would rather hear someone come in that knows our system rather than somebody that doesn't.
Right, and I'm not arguing that. I think it was just my point. We were moving in a direction, it wasn't because the board said, hey, you had to find something cheaper. I've never heard that come out of anyone's mouth up here. But if we were leaning towards a different company and making them, and the board approved it, and then they got a new rep, and we said, all right, we're gonna go back with this other company. What else was it that we wanted from this other company, so I'm trying to add? And then, should we be comparing LMT to somebody else?
It simply came down to numbers, and it was a very rushed thing. But we still didn't even get a complete contract. Don has pointed out that we still even have, they haven't even updated their service agreement yet. So, yeah, I don't feel comfortable with that. And it literally happened the day of the meeting. And then they said, we'll get it to you, we'll get it to you. Don was like, this is still the old one. And then the next day, he still couldn't give us answers. So I apologize. This looks unprofessional, and I understand that. But I don't feel comfortable with this company at this time. I was, but it's, something's changed. And this is something serious. You don't, you know...
Okay, we understand the server part, but I'm glad.
And I'm concerned that we won't have the on-in-house stuff, like, service that we have now. Because that, they charge for miles to come to us, which that wasn't told to us. And that's, it still would come out of the block. But they're just, they cannot give us a straight answer on price. And I, I'm just, I don't, I don't feel comfortable at this point.
Aren't they looking to know if you Pittsburgh just had, or?
Yes.
Are they happy with it?
I haven't had a chance to talk to them about it.
Well, I think the service they would have on LMT had been... I don't mean which...
Perhaps Coopian Village uses for IT services.
Well, there's not a lot of it there. Most of it... The whole thing that you're talking about was the cloud, right?
I just like the fee structure better with integrated systems. But I can't just make such a big change, not knowing.
There's, oh, he's had, there's like, I have invoices here. I don't understand.
I don't understand what?
Well, this is the first I've seen all this stuff from LMT. And frankly, I don't understand it. There's like five different invoices, like...
There's been, it's been in every packet the last five meetings.
I'm sorry, this has not been in every packet the last five meetings. I beg to differ with you. But, you know, this one's got numbers that are crossed off, and their numbers are handwritten. That hasn't been in the, we haven't seen that the last five meetings.
Yes, because you asked Joe about it the last meeting, and she explained that was...
Well, so, I, look, I'm just, I don't understand this. You know, because you get... What's the bottom line? Like, how much is the village paying?
It's hard to decide.
It's hard to figure out what they're charging you for.
And remember, they were here, they were here presenting. So they came, now, this is like the fourth meeting we have to go with LMT, and they presented their costs. And remember, they gave us a discount, a 20% discount on both moving to the cloud for email, as well as cloud in general. They were here presenting those numbers to you guys.
Yeah, so what's the final cost? Is it the $8,640? Understand, but I don't remember this either. We should, when anything, anytime there's pencil or pen written and crossed up prices, we have no idea who did that. You know, it should be a final, clean, you know what I mean, Heather? I don't know, cross it out.
Should it have their initials on there or something?
I believe that this is just for copy for anybody that's here.
Yeah, is that...
Hey, but who crossed this off?
I just told you that. Joe did, and, and we, this is...
Those are Joe's notes from the phone call that they had the day after the last meeting?
Yes.
Trying to get them to bring the price down more. So they wouldn't lose our business.
So they should give us an updated, clean version, not a Joe-changed version?
Well, it's not, but at this point, we're still not on the cloud. This is for the cloud. So yes, we will, we will write that, but we still want...
Right, so I just want to see their approved, clean, what they're charging us before I go yes to something, not what is written and...
And then Don to approve it.
You guys asked Joe about this. You go, what's this handwriting? You said that at the last meeting.
All right, so then that means we did change it. So that's not, that's making it even worse.
Because we can't... The reason, okay, so, and Paul, the reason that we can't is because we're anticipating that we're going to need less time once we move to the cloud. So these are anticipated figures, that we think we're going to need less time. So instead of the six-hour block...
I get that, but those anticipated figures have to come from the company, not Joe's handwriting. That's all I'm telling you.
It's really important legally. It's really important.
They can't say, you can't, if the prices are off and they say that's not what we're charging, oh, yeah, it is Joe wrote it in pink. That's, it doesn't make it a...
No, it's just the legal end of it. I just, my preference would just be that we have it exactly the way that we should.
How are you signing?
So if this, if we were to say, let's pursue this. This document were to go back to them. And it were then to come to us. But instead of these lines across, the numbers were actually put in place. And the final document that we would be approving would in fact then reflect that. I think that they're saying that they would be more comfortable with that rather than to say, yeah, we're gonna tell you what this, they crossed out and written in.
Well, and at this time, we don't need to sign anything because we're still with them. This is for when we go to the cloud.
But I still...
Doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. We're approving this. And if we're doing that, then what we should have is a clean copy.
Okay.
Okay, that's all. So in terms of LMT coming back to you, the services and the cost that they are for the future. This is what we're approving for the future. Then it should be, instead of $375 crossed off, it should be $300 under software page five, R5, et cetera, okay? So they should actually have the value that has been put and inserted instead of the cross off.
Well, I can forward you the original one they sent, which was in your packet as well before this one. You did, you have seen this. So I can reforward that to you. But it's not going to include these discounts, because we don't know how much we're going to need yet. So I apologize. I should have done this one and a separate one. But we don't know for sure if we're going to need three hours yet. It's still, it's very unknown.
Where does any of this say anything about three hours, six hours, any kind of hours? I see, I see basically two invoices that the guy signed, and there's, there's lines for Joe to sign.
They're quotes, though.
Well, they're quotes, but okay, but I don't, there's nothing right now.
But Joe, I don't think Joe can sign for this quote anyway. It should have to be someone on the board there.
Well, the board can authorize her to sign it if she wants to. But, so, there's one quote, software. It was $375. It's knocked down to $300. So I assume, is that different than... So that must be something different than what's on the bill for $8,640, or the quote for $8,640, and the quote for $850. So you're asking for the total of all, this combined?
Yeah, because there's, it is confusing, because there's two separate things happening. We, because initially, you guys said you wanted to do it, potentially wanted to do maybe just the email first. So it's not just in one quote. The first quote is just to do the email changeover, because you guys weren't sure if maybe you just wanted to do that. Because that is the most pressing issue.
Yeah, we felt that having one company do the one and the other do the other, that's what the conversation was, would have been a bad combination.
No, I know, but I'm talking about before that, before that. When they were actually here, you guys, there, I, there was a document that broke it down. And you said, well, maybe we wanted to do just email. So that's why we have two different quotes. One is just for the email, and one is for everything to go over the cloud. Because technically, you don't have to do that. The most pressing thing we need is for our email, because it's costing us a lot more money. Because it's, it's on its last leg. It can no longer be updated. So this, and you're right, 100%, this should have been updated. This 20 users, if you're looking on page two of five, that is because we deleted users that are no longer here. We keep them for a certain amount of time, just so that we don't lose any emails. So that decreased the price, down to 20 instead of 25. And we just, we just, just did that. We deleted Megan. Carol was still there, because we just don't want to lose emails. And then...
It's as bad as the other company. Shit all over the place.
What's all over the place?
Well, that's what Don said. It's very confusing. Well, I know this is important, but we gotta be fiscally responsible for our constituents. So that's why...
I know, and I don't mean to be disrespectful in any way. But I have put it, I've, this is, I've seen this number multiple times now.
Put on page three of five, what's $6,840? It looks like rather than $5,400. And that includes the customer appreciation of 20% discount.
I think you said three of five.
Page three of five. I see subtotal of $5,400.
Then it went up to $6,875.
$6,840.
I think that's probably just the confusion is all this. And then you just, you just told me a couple minutes ago that she made this change after, the next morning after a meeting, and that's where the changes are from. But then you're telling me I already seen these numbers. Well, how did I see unless you did it after the meeting? So I'm kind, I'm so confused.
Because the, these numbers, this was in our packet from the last meeting. Now, not everybody has seen it.
With the pen scratches and the change?
Yes, because you guys joked about it then. So I should have said something, and I didn't. I apologize. It was really crazy.
And that's fine, if that's what we said. I'm just saying, you just told me she made these changes the day after.
Let me explain. And the meeting before that, when we had LMT here, it was two meetings before that, they came here, they stood right there, and they gave a presentation. And they said they would give us, they would think about a discount. So then you guys all said, hey, can you give us a number? Can you give us a better number? So Joe got on the phone, and they offered us 20% for each of these pop.
And that was the day after a meeting?
Yes.
So this cross off stuff is from the day after a meeting? That's what I'm asking?
Yes.
Okay, you told me I've seen these before, and now I haven't. So that's why I just want to...
Well, because, yes, because in the last meeting, it was in there with the cross outs. So I apologize.
I'm so...
So Carol?
How could it be their last meeting if it happened after the meeting?
I have two meetings.
Jerry, I just said two, two meetings.
$5,400 to $6,875, right?
Last meeting?
You're not understanding.
No, I am.
I don't know what Dennis.
Yeah, so, that page, like Carol's original question? Says $5,400, 20% discount. Why is it $6,875? Did you see that page? Did you see what I'm saying? Doesn't make sense. Well, I think they're just in different order in the last page. Last page summarizes, you know, what they are, but it's confusing because they're in different order. The $5,400 goes back to page one or to page two, which is all those services, which is migrating over to Microsoft 365. The 64, or $5,400 after the 20% discount. And then the next line, the top line there, is actually the 300, which is the software that goes back to page one, which is the software product description, the second thing down. Well, it's the top thing on this one. And then when you get to subscriptions, they drop it down to 500. That's the bottom one on that same page there.
And Jerry, I really do understand what you're saying. I want, I want to make this clear. I apologize. Let me make this clear one more time. I'm sorry. So the last meeting, when you ran it, you and Al were here. This was in there, okay? Two meetings, a meeting before that was when they were here, and they said they would offer us a 20% discount. So this was two times ago. So this was, so we got the discount two times.
Right, and I got that. But then you told me that she made these changes after this last meeting.
I meant, I meant the one before when they...
That's what I was...
I apologize.
So I got you.
So basically, what we would like to see is a clean copy without the cross offs. Okay, and I think that is an issue. That we'd sign something that has just cross outs on it and numbers and not a clean copy. This is what they offered as a final, okay? And so I think that that's, that would be what I think we're looking for.
I can't wait any longer, though, for the Microsoft exchange. That's the one thing that we now, you know, we've been asking. This is not the fourth meeting we've been asked about it. We can't wait any longer. It just, it just costs another $850.
Heather, then we should, we should come with a clean document and a contract for Daryl to sign that shows what we're, we're paying.
I can send that out.
Then we can redo it. So, so the bottom line is here is you're asking that the village spend a total of $14,340 to go to the cloud and then ongoing costs of $1,300 a month, right?
No, it's $1,200 a month. And we, and where the number says where we think it might go down to the 800 is because we think that we might not need six hours. So that's why it's hard for us to differentiate that. Because we still don't know what we're going to need until we... The cost would be the same now. Down, the cost wouldn't change much as of now. But once we go over to the cloud, we're anticipating that it's going to decrease. So that's why it was hard for us to really show you, because we don't know. But this is what we're, this is what we're hoping for, that it's going to go down a little bit, because we're not going to need as much service. Because they do most of the stuff in-house. So that's why it was hard for us to show you that.
So since we really didn't get a number out of the, of the company, and since this is a number that is projected, they're both the same kind of thing, where we would have approved something that we have no final number on. But your comfort level is better here than it is with the other company.
So, so the quote says that they want something to sign, which actually makes it, turns it into a contract. And it says the approved quote means that you accept the terms of the quote, the master services agreement, statement of work, service level guarantee, and acceptable use policy. Has anybody seen any of that stuff?
I think it's the same one that we already have currently.
You think it is? Are you 100% certain?
What was the question again? I'm sorry.
Well, right above the signature line means it says this approved quote means that you accept the terms of the quote, master services agreement, statement of work, service level guarantee, and acceptable use policy. And the question is, has anybody reviewed those? To see what the heck's in them.
It was in another packet, and I didn't put it in this one, and I showed it. I'm sorry.
And you should be reviewing that as a legal servant.
Well, I didn't, I didn't see it.
Well, that's why I want you to look at it first.
And I would assume we already looked at it at some point since our current vendor.
Yes, you've already seen that.
Well, how long have you had LMT?
Since before I started.
Okay, so, it's at least four years? Well, so if I saw them, it's five, six, I don't know how many years ago. I don't remember what that was, you know? And maybe they've changed.
No, I mean, I included it when I was, a couple meetings ago, when I did the integrated systems. I can go print it, like, so I can show you. It was in there.
And then, so, so are you supposed to... So for just the, the email part? Where they want $5,700? And part of that is the...
And part of that is the assist customer was set up of endpoints. Estimate 0.5 hours per user client will be invoiced actual. So do you send them the 5,400 dollars upfront? And then they'll reimburse you if they actually use less than 13 hours worth, at $180 an hour? Or do you wait to pay them until they actually bill you?
I believe we wait to pay them until they.
Where's it, all right, does it say that anywhere?
I will double check that. Because they can't anticipate how long it's going to take. Like, I have a ton of emails saved, Jake has a ton of emails saved. That can take longer. Which is the major reason why we didn't want to go with integrated systems, because they could not give us a set, even, even a ballpark of how long it would take. They said it could take up to 100 hours, and that's the full block we were going to buy. So, and they couldn't, they couldn't even give us a gestating.
Yeah, no, I understand that part. I just want this to be as clear as and accurate as we can be. So that we know exactly what we're trying to accomplish.
So why don't, why don't you see if, you know, they, so they included in the 5,400 dollars, $2,340 for that work. So why don't you see if, we'll pay you the difference, which is like the hard costs, I guess. And then invoice us, invoice the village when you know what the actual hours are, and we'll pay you that.
That's what it says.
Why it will be invoiced actual?
I know it, but the question is, this, they want 5,400 dollars upfront. So does that mean they're going to refund you money if you used left? Or, so my point, my point is.
It may just be the minimal.
My point is, is pay them everything else besides the 2,340. And then they'll send you a bill for their actual time, and then pay that.
Yep. So then we should.
None of that, that doesn't say that.
So we go ahead and approve this.
Contingent on.
On, on the actual number, if that's what you're agreeing on. And then contingent on a clean copy that Daryl can sign in the office, if he's not informed of this meeting.
Well, no, we did the series.
They, they bill us after Joe said.
For what?
For, they bill us after they determine how long, after they do the work.
Right, so how, but the question is, how much do they want upfront?
Joe just, Joe just.
Right, well, that's different than what.
Jesus.
It's different than what, again, what this quote says that you're going to sign. It looks like, it looks like you're paying them, whatever the heck, whatever the heck that thing was. It looks like they want, you know, 6,200 dollars. Or at least 5,700 dollars.
Mine says 6,345.
I think the 6,345 was the, what it was for four, the 20% discount. I think she just wanted to let you know what the amount was.
Okay.
So, so this, this means they don't want any money upfront? It's just a quote, is it?
Correct, nothing upfront.
Okay. So, and what about the rest of it? Are we going to have to go through this agony again, you know, in a few weeks for the, after?
I'll get you an update over that.
For the other, for the other part, and, you know, you're doing the email thing. Why not do the other part too?
So my understanding is that you're going to, the contract you're going to receive is, I can literally send it to you in two seconds. I have it, it was in another packet. It's not going to be any, these numbers that Joe has written, those are what we're hoping for. But they're not going to say that, because we don't know until we actually start with the cloud. So there's, they're actually going to be the three seconds. Like, any numbers crossed out, you're going to sign to those numbers. After we get the cloud, we are hoping that we're not going to need. So, and how this works is, we get six hours per month. And that includes them coming here, giving us support, setting up computers, helping Jake, helping me, whatever, whatever we need them to do. But that also includes work, they're working on the servers in actual our office. But now that we'll be on the cloud, we won't need that. So we're anticipating that we'll need probably less, half the hours. And I think Joe just wanted to show you that we're hoping, we're anticipating this cost is going to go down. It should have been a better way to show you, and I apologize.
So Heather, are you, sorry, are you saying that, that what we would be signing is what is printed here? And the handwritten numbers are what we hope to see?
Correct.
No, no, now let it's explained that way, 40 minutes later.
All right.
She's, you're approving the, the hard numbered copy. So if you believe in this total and agree with this, that's what you're approving. And, and they're demonstrating that when they're all said and done, we may see these savings, or we may not. So worst case scenario would be the printed numbers.
The printed.
And then it's, it's kind of strange, the two, you know, pages 5 of 5. The one is the sentence about approving the master service agreement and all that stuff. And the other one doesn't. But we did all that.
I think that might be because it's just the email, and it doesn't really have anything to do with the full.
No, it's the email one is the one that's got all that extra stuff in it.
I know.
And the other one, the other one doesn't. So, so the second one, with the 8640, is just a pure quote. So go ahead, and they're going to, you're just basically telling them, go ahead and do the work. And you're hoping it's going to come in at somewhere around 8640. But it could be more, it could be less, because it depends on the amount of time that it's going to take. You know, because the, the page.
Why don't they go be more?
Well, it says page three of five. It says they're estimating 16 to 22 hours. So they, they're quoting the 22 hours, hopefully it's less. And then user setup, a half hour, an hour per user?
Not to exceed.
Well, it, it doesn't say it. It just says you're going to be invoiced the actual amount, so it could be more. They're not guaranteeing you, you know, that it's only going to be 22 hours.
Now that time and atomic, they could have moved everything to the left.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you went to a.
Plus, I have other ones, so I don't have to communicate.
You want to pick up.
And they are somebody that we know, and.
Well, we have no other company to go with. So that's, that would be point. So there you have it.
Other company.
Other company.
I don't remember what their name is at this point, so. Integrity something. Sorry, integrity. All right, so what do you want to do? Do you want to vote on it, or are you going to wait?
This is a proposal, I would go with this proposal.
Okay, so it's.
If they have a, a level of comfort with the company that they know at this particular point versus one that they don't know, don't feel comfortable to do that, and what they have not, I don't know if they've even quoted something like they have here.
Can't tell you that, sir.
I don't know.
What was it?
Did they quote something like what has been quoted in here to you, or not?
Integrated?
Integrated.
No, they couldn't get any information.
They couldn't get any numbers. Because it all comes from the block.
It all comes from the block.
They're set up sort of.
And if it fits into that block, we do it.
It's $85 an hour if you buy $100, the big block. I think it's more, that's like the best rate. But they couldn't tell us how much time it would take. So everything comes out of that block.
Like LMT can't tell so much time. They both can. Obviously, that's.
No, but they're at least telling you that this is what it's going to be.
They know our system.
Yeah, it's about, it's about their comfortability, because we figured out the numbers, even if you went to the past, it would be cheaper, that's why. Based on what we heard or voted.
Well, my, my understanding from what Heather has said is that LMT, I mean, they can't know, but LMT at least gave us a range. Well, we think it'll be between this many and this many, but the other place, what was it? What did they keep saying? Like, I can't speak to that?
I can't speak to that. I can't speak to that.
They couldn't even estimate?
No.
How much time it would take?
Yeah, I thought that was ridiculous.
That's, that's what, that's what she's not happy with.
I just, I just, I feel warmer. LMT to me is fine.
And the crazier thing.
I would just feel warmer if I.
Is that they sent someone out. So they have seen our systems. And he said he didn't have access to that. They sent someone out and looked at it.
Yeah, and again, I don't think there's any concern if you went with either company. They're, they're not a company that just came yesterday.
No.
They're, they're around as well, just, it is what I like. No, I'm just saying the other company's been around all the time as well. It's not about that. So they're, they're more comfortable, they like how the system works, that's fine. We did the math based on last meeting's numbers, and the other organization was cheaper. That's part of our decision. And they were offering kind of the same thing. So now, we're going to go back to this direction. I guess you can ask for a note, sir. So we can get on to our.
I think that if they're comfortable, if the office is comfortable, we're at LMT. And they have a feeling of discomfort with the other company, with the other quote, at this particular time. And I think, personally, I would lean towards their feelings, since their people haven't worked with it. LMT doesn't want to have to work with it.
That's why you're the boss.
I mean, done. We both, we can vote for this contingent on an official copy? What are your thoughts on this, sir? Well, it's, it's, it's just a quote, so it doesn't really matter. The numbers are just estimates, really.
Basically, we would be voting on continuing with LMT.
No, some of, well, no, you're, you need to authorize Joe or somebody to sign the quote, both quotes, and then send them back, so that LMT can actually do the work. And then, after they're done, they'll send an invoice, that'll itemize the actual amount of time they spent, and that's what you got to pay. You know, so, basically, they're telling you that the, the whole package should, should cost somewhere around $14,340. Could be less. There's no guarantee it won't be more, but, you know. And then, but it looks like the 1350 a month is a pretty hard number, because there's no estimates based on, with the monthly subscriptions. So it's going to, going forward, it'll cost the village 1350 a month.
And what is it now? The service now?
It's, it's actually, it's going down $200. So, yeah. We're switching to the cloud. I'm just trying to find, I'm pulling up the.
It's basically 1550 or so. It's going down to, going down to $200.
Right.
1350.
That's not right.
I'm thinking less, but that could be because when I pay the bills, I split it between General and Sewer.
I think it's, I just don't want to, I'm scared now to say anything, but I think it's 1,200 a month is what it's, it's going to be. So I think 13 is what it is now.
That's not what they have here. I think it's even using, using Joe's crossed out numbers.
Not the, the original, the original one.
She's got subscriptions $500.
Not the cross-outs.
Yeah, don't use the cross-outs.
Don't use the cross-outs.
Those are.
And then it's 625 for the, for the email part a month. And 875 for the monthly cloud services. So where would the total end? 1500? 1500. So going forward, it'll be 1,500 a month. So are you saying it's 1,700 a month now?
No.
She's saying it's less.
Yeah.
It's 1,200, so it's going to go up.
Well, it probably should be less, because that's what you're paying for when you go to the cloud. You owe Microsoft, you know, somewhere in here is, they got to pay Microsoft for the subscription. Now, whether they're adding something else for themselves, I don't know, probably, but.
Marsha, I'm pretty sure it's 1,300 now per month.
So you've got, you're going basically to a more subscription-based service, rather than having all this stuff in-house.
If it's going down to 12, Heather, that's fine. But Don, it just doesn't show that. It shows it's going the other way.
Okay, and I can pull up a bill too while you guys are talking.
So I'm glad, then even more, we shouldn't be signing this. If you're saying it's going a different direction than what's on here.
I, I want to check before I.
All right. So, I'm not voting on it.
Well, I know a table.
You, you can vote.
Can we table this to the next meeting?
I think we need a decision.
The email has to be, I think it should be done one way or another.
Carl, you have your iPad, right? I can literally send you the packet where all of the numbers were broken down from three meetings ago. So you'll be able, it's in there. I can resend it to you right now, but I know not everybody can see that.
Yeah, we'll make it easier.
Okay.
Personally, I think we should go with LMT for the email. They're setting it up, it'll be in the cloud, right?
Yeah, I don't think we're questioning going with LMT. There's no one else to go with at this point.
I just want to know what it's going to be.
Right, she's saying it's going down, and we'll be happier since it's going up.
Exactly.
So we just have to find out what the final number is. I mean, you're going to approve a quote, but you really don't know what the numbers. I mean, you're comfortable doing that. You can sign and end this meeting, or end this piece right.
My comfort level would come from the four people, or three people that are in the office that basically use this.
We're not, we're not debating the company. There's only one company to choose from.
My comfort level, my comfort level.
Marsha's going to go get the exact numbers. What we're paying now.
Except that what anyone, whether it be Joe or myself, would sign would not be something with cross-outs by. And those cross-outs, if this is what they have come back with, should reflect those numbers.
Well.
It's not, you already, we got it, we already, you're. Those cross-outs are potential savings that we may see. So you got to just take the cross-outs out, and sign what this ink says.
Exactly, and that's where we still.
Hopefully, Joe's.
And we have an original without those.
Yeah. Joe's partnership with them on the phone, she created some cost savings. And we all know, yeah. So that's kind of how it is.
And Marsha's going to go get the exact numbers of what we're paying now.
The que, the question we have now that Don brought up is, is the cost is going to cost it monthly, which you totaled 1350. Heather says no, it's going down to.
No, it's actually 1,500.
1,500. But Heather says it's going down to 12. So if it is, you're going to sign a quote that says 1550, and they're going to say, oh, great, there's going to be extra money. If it's supposed to be 12, we need to have the document that says 12. So it's, we're not debating LMT anymore, we're just debating.
The numbers that are on there.
Yeah, yeah.
So all these written in numbers, or just?
It could be. Yes, those are, Joe was just trying to, after we, I got, when they explained, so that's a lot. It's just Joe saying, hey.
Unless we see this.
No, just the printed, if we go by the printed numbers period. And I didn't look at that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Jake's over there playing poker.
But do we follow on?
Before the email, what's staying here?
My feeling is, my feeling is that if they're comfortable, the office is comfortable with LMT, we have LMT, I would go and continue with this.
I agree with that. I think we all agree with that.
We're not discussing.
We're not disagreeing that it's LMT.
What, then let's do a resolution to, to go with that and to continue with that.
That's not what the resolution is.
It's not a resolution. That's what we're talking about.
Unless you wanna, unless you wanna make a resolution, Darryl.
Yeah.
Do you wanna make a resolution that says the village of Webster will hire LMT for its IT services no matter what the cost is?
You just need quotes. You, you only have to do is sign a quote and it's, you just needed to add your quote to sign. Like if you, you go to, you go to buy a car and they tell you it's gonna be seven grand and then you sign a quote that it was nine grand, that's what it is. They're telling you one thing or we're saying one thing and it's different.
So if we're signing this whole thing and it's, we're signing for the real numbers, we're signing for the real numbers. With the expectation of getting a return on, on some things, here's fifty dollars here, twenty dollars here, twenty- Do you actually think they're gonna get this? Are we gonna get that discount? Probably not.
No.
It's, I mean, it's-
But if you had your intentions of signing this and all tonight, then we can move on like a half hour ago.
Yeah, but in terms of signing something that is crossed off versus signing something that is clean.
I just sent Gary the originals in his email, Carl the originals, with no crossouts.
And it's the same as what we see right there, with no crossouts.
You're emailing that to me?
Yeah.
So is it on, so if you can pull it up, is it fifteen fifty a month or is it twelve hundred? That's, that's three hundred dollars a month difference.
Big difference.
And then you can go ahead and sign it tonight if it's exactly what we're saying. You emailed this, me, to this?
To your work email. I thought you didn't have village on there. Oh, hold on. I thought you didn't have village on your phone, sorry.
I don't.
So I didn't, I, I sent it to your hillside.
Don't, I don't, just, I don't confuse my email. I don't.
You, you just sent them ones without the crossout, right? So it's six twenty-five a month plus eight seventy-five a month. That's fifteen hundred. The question is that they wanted answered was, well, what are we paying now?
And Marcia's gonna go get it.
And that's what we're waiting for Marcia to figure out.
So the monthly subtotal, according to this, is eleven seventy-five. This was the new quote.
For the month?
Yes.
So then why do we have this stuff? We don't know that?
This is the quote that was on one-
Eleven seventy-five.
But then there was a three hundred dollar discount. Then they subtracted three hundred dollars and they came up with eight seventy-five.
I'll just make sure I have the right one. They're multiple.
I think we'll leave the public hearing. People have been waiting.
Yeah, I know.
Well, why don't you table this for now and then go into the public hearing?
Yeah.
Well, we're gonna have a clean copy for you tomorrow when you come in to see me.
All right.
And you're sure you wanna go with LMT?
Oh, do it. Jerry, please.
Okay, we are now going to the public hearing and our first public hearing. A little later than ten, however, uh, we have a public hearing on proposed local law number two of two thousand twenty-two entitled, quote, "A local law to extend the benefits of the Cold War veterans exemption. Qualified owners of taxable real property within the village of Webster," unquote. And at this particular time, I would, um, need a, do I need a vote to open? Not, or can I just open for comment?
Um, you don't really need to vote. You can just open the public hearing. Close the public hearing.
And at this time, uh, public hearing is now open for public comment.
Kind of come from the cloud.
I used all my words. I can't say anything after this. Done.
All right, well, I don't see anybody who wishes to address the board regarding this, so I will close the public hearing. At one fifty-four. And at this point, we will move on to our second public hearing. And that is a public hearing on proposed local law number three of two thousand twenty-two. Entitled, quote, "A local law to extend the benefits of the volunteer firefighters and volunteer ambulance worker exemption. Qualified owners of taxable real property within the village of Webster," unquote. And at this time, that is now our four. We close into the public comment and we wish to move on.
Richard Walder, Twenty Elm Street. I have been a member of the local fire department for over fifty years. However, I do not qualify for this because my active time was only seventeen years and I believe the way the law is written, it requires twenty years of active service. I'm sure Jake would qualify and many of the gentlemen that are now volunteer firemen would qualify for this or will in the future. I think this is a very good way of rewarding those people who have done a lot of community service. At one time, the country, New York State, did exempt volunteer firemen from doing other community service such as jury duty. They were exempt from jury duty. However, that, that was taken away several years ago from volunteer firemen and I think this would be a very good reward and help, also maybe help a little bit to solve the problem that many communities are having now and that is recruiting volunteer firemen. It's very hard to keep a full force of volunteer firemen and many communities have gone to partly paid fire departments, which is costing them a lot more than this tax credit would be costing the community. So I think it is very good for the volunteer firemen and be very good for vol, other volunteers, not just firemen, but also very good for the community. Thank you.
I have a, I have a question.
Turn off our TV, huh?
No.
This includes the firefighters, the ambulance workers as well, I believe, right? I have a question. That says, what's a question? Jake, uh, there are paid members, are there not, of the Webster Volunteer Fire Department?
No.
Nope?
No.
So all those who are in there are under volunteers, including the officers, et cetera?
Yeah, everybody's a volunteer. We, the district has an administrator and the district has a, a part-timer. Um, but the department itself is all volunteers. No, the department's basically a, lack of a better term, a club that supplies manpower to the district. They're completely separate entities.
If there are no other, uh, public, no other comments, then I will close this portion of the public, uh, hearing. And, um, having heard those, uh, comments, uh, we will look to, um, consider that and we will be voting on this at the end of the week. Moving then to item number four. Resolution to set a public hearing on proposed local law number four of two thousand twenty-two entitled, quote, "The local law to amend and clarify chapter eighty-five of the code of the village of Webster," entitled Noise. Uh, you have a-
Yeah.
Copy of that in front of you. Um, I believe that the, uh, primary focus of this is to, uh, amend during the hours of seven AM through eight PM. No person shall operate, um, or cause or permit to be operated any device that produces sound level across a residential real property, uh, in excess of sixty-five decibels. L ten in excess of fifty decibels.
What's an L ten?
An item. To me, uh, hours of seven AM to eight PM is during the day.
But it says-
And so you have during the hours of eight PM to seven AM, no person shall operate or cause to be permitted. And then, exactly then, um-
It doesn't make sense.
I know, that's twenty-four hours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's saying this from seven AM to eight PM, you can be, over a period of daylight hours, you can be ten decibels louder than you got at night.
But there's still a limit.
Yeah, there's still a limit. Uh, the decibels at nine or fifty-five decibels and decibels during the day are, uh, this is as it exists in our code. We're basically changing it from where it says eight AM to seven AM. That's the only-
And does it call, does this, this Monday through Friday?
Um, I'd have to look at our code to see eighty-five eleven.
Sundays, you're not letting, banging down a house on seven AM.
You look at, uh-
I think that during the day, it should be, I mean, five dBs, that's not very much.
No.
No.
But I'm just curious on the weekends if it is the same today.
I mean, people are cutting trees down, operating air, air hammers. Pretty noisy. Acry cutters. I would say that's one of the sixty-five dBs. Well, with respect to the dial tone of the telephone, if everybody remembers what those are, the eighty decibels, so.
Dial tone is eighty?
Yes. You are a home engineer.
Wow, tell him that.
I always thought it was one ten. Gary made me.
Oh, what a cruel one.
All right, it's time to go.
Just looking at eighty-five. I just might put that in perspective that he, well, I guess this is just to set the public hearing, but-
Yes.
Eighty-five eleven.
Just curious.
Is residential district. I do recall there's, um, somewhere in the code, um, difference on the, on the weekend, but I don't believe that has changed. But, um, again, this is just to set the public hearing and I can-
All right, you analogize to it, no, just terms about the weekend hours.
It's not in the noise orders. It's just, it's the same any day of the week.
Makes sense.
Does vacuum cleaner seventy-five dB eight?
Well, so if you're vacuuming outside.
You're vacuuming your car, you know.
Yeah.
Can't do that.
Who brought this up?
Well, anyways, this is a notice of public hearing, so, uh-
Aaron, Aaron wanted it changed.
To seven o'clock, seven eight.
To seven AM.
Yeah, seven eight.
All right, so let's, um, let's just set the hearing and then we-
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've got a lot to continue to do.
But look, there's no use setting the public hearing if you wanna change this because any changes, if we change it, it'll require another public hearing. You get, the public gets notice of whatever the law is that you're proposing to pass. Not one that, well, we think it might be this and we're gonna have a public hearing.
That's a very good point.
So don't set the public hearing if you don't like this particular version of the law and, you know, we'll change it and then-
Say anyone ever problem with?
But the only change-
We'll change it and then we'll change, we'll-
But the only change, isn't it from seven AM to eight?
Yeah, I'm just, I just asked, it shouldn't say in here one day, seven days a week or something? Or we just assume it is?
Yeah, I would guess unless it says, you know, otherwise.
You would assume.
Assume that's, you know, it's any day.
Right.
All right.
And it doesn't say otherwise.
No one has a problem with that?
And Carl, if you look at the definitions section, it defines L ten. I can read it to you, but I don't, I have no clue what it means. You gotta be some kind of an audio engineer or something to understand it. It's the eight weighted sound level measured with a slow response that has exceeded nine percent of the time in any one hour interval. The measurement time interval may not be one hour correct if the measurement results are representative in any one hour interval. That?
No, that's, yeah, oh, that makes it clear as anything.
All right, so if no one has an issue with this, is it rights you get the public hearing? If we have issues or wanna change something, we can, something pretty quiet around here.
Let's set the, uh, set it for the next meeting.
Yeah, at seven ten.
And this is ten, so that would be-
February twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, seven ten.
As long as it gets published in the Webster Herald and actually shows up on that Thursday, at least five days before the meeting. I don't have my calendar out, but make sure I post it.
If there's tears in the Webster Herald next week, which it should be able to, that would be more than five days that we do.
No.
At that time, I would find out what this, if I remember.
All right. Did you ask for a motion? Yes.
All right, um, then I would like to have a motion to, um, establish a public, um, hearing for February twenty-fourth at seven ten PM, uh, here in the boardroom. On proposed local law number four of two thousand twenty-two. Entitled, "A local law to extend-" "A local law to amend and clarify chapter eighty-five of the code of the village of Webster," entitled Noise.
Perfect technique, the noise.
This might be about the admise kind of Trump's era.
I hear a, my-
Yeah, I'll make that-
One second.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Alkane?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next item is a resolution to authorize the village treasurer to accept a proposal from Menno Nester Bar at an estimated cost of twenty-one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars to prepare the village of Webster on the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three of the physical year.
This is because, um, the other organizations no longer do that.
Yeah, well, today no longer I do, please can operate at the fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand that they were charging.
I heard from another source that they were, before they decided to just quit doing government audits completely, they were thinking about increasing their prices by sixty percent.
Oh, wow.
We got a good deal for a long time and now it's over.
Right, but they were great company.
Was that lady's name?
Lauren.
Lauren.
Lauren Anderson.
And you got three proposals?
Yeah.
That's good.
One of them I couldn't believe, eleven thousand. And the other two are pretty common.
We got four. One was, yeah, so low I can't imagine how they could do jobs.
So we didn't include that one.
Huh?
We didn't include that one.
But we don't, we refuse.
I think we're a control, we're a control.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're good.
So I would ask for a, um, motion to, uh, authorize the village treasurer to accept a proposal from Menno Nester Bar at an estimated cost of twenty-one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars to prepare the audit for twenty-two twenty-three.
I'll make that one.
I'll say.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Balkan?
Hi.
Have you ready to go on?
Oh, yeah.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes. And just to clarify, you'll be getting, um, an engagement letter- And just to clarify, you'll be getting, um, an engagement letter once. That happens after, you'll sign that later.
What about you, Eric?
You didn't ask me, you know, say hi.
See, I don't. I'm not mad. You guys get me all frazzled. I do the best I can.
It's our fault, I know it's our fault.
It's all our fault.
Okay, moving on. Item number six is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement between the village of Webster and the Webster Association of Senior Program, WASP, uh, between June 1st, 2021 and May 31st, 2022. This agreement, here is the service agreement, number of things that are in here, but for services performed pursuant to this agreement, the village agrees to pay the WASPs a sum of $1,500 in lump sum. I believe that, uh, subject to the terms and conditions set forth in this agreement, the village hereby engages WASPs to provide transportation services to senior citizen residents of the village, to include transportation to and for medical and dental appointments, such as doctors, dental dialysis, chemotherapy, physical therapy, pharmacy, and any other health related shopping trips. WASPs also agrees to provide, and this kind of great wheelchair transportation pursuant to this, of the village of Webster. Personally, I think the services that they provide are excellent and extremely important to.
Yeah, because when I'm back, even when I had seniors, and I helped them out, it was amazing. Very cool.
Make that motion.
I'll say it. Hold on, just one second, the video went down. I can't do everything now. Was that Trustee Lancy that made it? Or Trustee? Trustee Lancy?
Hi.
And was that Trustee Lauer that signed it?
Oh, me.
Trustee Alkane? Trustee Alito? Okay. Who do I have now? Trustee Lauer, okay. Mayor Byers?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Uh, item number seven, resolution to approve the release of $207,426 from the letter of credit for Greenbrier Crossing, through the request dated 2/1/22 to authorize the village board to sign a letter to Five Star Bank to facilitate the release of funds. I believe as they're moving on, they have asked for this release from their letter of credit. We have a, take a look here at their services, they have provided this for their release of funds. What they have been accomplishing in their work that they're doing up there. Coming along pretty well. We have a motion for approval of this resolution.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say. Trustee Lauer?
Hi.
Trustee Lancy?
Hi.
Trustee Alkane?
Hi.
Trustee Alito? Mayor Byers?
Hi.
Motion passes.
I want to move to item number nine at the moment, a resolution to authorize the following items as surplus. W6, uh, vehicle, W17, and the John Deere Gager. Jake, I believe those items are go where to auction?
Yes, yeah, we took the photo option, because it's a, uh, most fair price for what they, you know, they are.
I hear a motion to authorize these items for classification.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Alito?
Hi.
Trustee Lancy?
Hi.
Trustee Alkane?
Hi.
Trustee Lauer?
Hi.
Mayor Byers?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, um, very quickly, I will move here to item number eight, um, update on the wastewater treatment, um, plant upgrades. There was a meeting that was held with, um, La Bella and the village, um, that was Wednesday, February 2nd. We met with them via Zoom and went through what they are proposing. The items, um, started out with a project team introduction and, uh, so it was pretty good in terms of getting to know them. There were, uh, one, two, three, four, uh, people from La Bella, there were three from BTD, which I believe is, uh, the financial or fiscal advisors, and then, uh, it was myself, Marcia Adams, John Carter Valley, Heather Halsted, and Jake Swinley, as well as Don White on the call. They went through and talked, first of all, about the background and objectives and the funding, uh, then talked about La Bella's scope of work and deliverables, and, uh, those have then, um, uh, provided, um, and, uh, if you would like to, uh, you know, know what in the world they're, they're taking a look at, what they're doing, um, they're taking a look here, permitting for building permits, planning board permits, uh, shipo, uh, permit, they're going to be setting up a task of preliminary design and final design, and then they will be producing, um, uh, deliverables, anticipated deliverables with, um, the final issue for construction plans and specs. They have a proposed schedule, which I will, excuse me, briefly take a look at in a moment. Their project control plans, the communication site access, the change control and risk management and quality management, all of these, uh, were discussed and, uh, that will, uh, there will be a contact with the town to discuss what level of communication they prefer as the project proceeds, and Jake will provide, uh, Carl's contact information, the board member, Carl will be included on distribution of future, uh, meeting minutes.
That's good.
We then have, uh, excuse me, that's sorry. Village standard specialty requirements and transfer of available record information was provided as well, and, um, kind of finished up here with, um, a, uh, technical scope of, um, meeting schedules, uh, February 18th at 9 o'clock, uh, village of Webster Water, wastewater treatment, participants will be Jake, John, Matt, Brian, and Brad, um, that will be La Bella, as well as Jake and John, and then there will be monthly progress meetings. Matt will be sending that information, a monthly progress meetings, the first Wednesday of each month at 10:00 AM. The board, as promised, will be kept, um, advised of all of the progress that is taking place for the wastewater treatment plant improvements, and, um, the project schedule you have in your packet as well, uh, this project, uh, schedule, you can find in here, and there is a timeline, uh, in terms of the dates, it's a little bit hard to read because it was a long document, it may have reduced it significantly. But, uh, February through April of, um, uh, 2022, uh, they will have, um, beginning the, uh, data collection, and then they will be moving to permitting, and that will continue on through, um, December of this year. Also, uh, preliminary design will go on February and March, and then we'll move into final design, which will run from April until, um, September of 2022. And then we'll move to construction documents, uh, through December of 2022. Pre-construction, uh, construction services would run then, uh, through until approximately April of 2023, construction then beginning in 2023. So I've provided you with a, uh, their timeline for construction as you, uh, as they progress, okay? Terms of their project scope, uh, we have seen this before, but the scope of the project is here in these two pages, entitled project scope, and that fits along here with the, uh, opinion of probable project costs. You might remember that this was presented to the board and was presented to La Bella, um, actually, not this year, but last year, we're projecting out to 2022 and 2023 to then begin actual construction, so some of these things obviously are going to change, okay? But you have a timeline, you have a, uh, cost as well as, um, um, some of the principles that are involved in terms of content as well, okay? The monthly meetings and the updates on that Wednesday, uh, Jake, I assume, will be certainly part of that, I should be a part of that, and we will be disseminating that information to the board soon.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay? We will keep you all apprised. After what's going on, if things are beginning to be full.
Yeah, this is really well written, it gives, yeah, I got a lot of information out of this.
All right, at this particular time, we will move to Don, you have anything for us?
No, I don't.
Yeah.
Now we move to Heather.
Um, okay.
The zoning board member changes, et cetera.
Yes, thank you. So, we need to, um, Don is working on it, I believe, we might have to do a zoning change, right? The local law to, um, change the, um, the dates of when everybody starts and ends everything, um, but we have one person, unfortunately, he is not doing well, so he, um, stepped down, and so we have to, um, approve another member for the zoning. And then we have Karen Winhorn, who is, will be back to do a, um, to be an alternate, so we just need a vote to, um, approve both members. Yes. So, um, Peter Bowers will now be, um, a regular member instead of a alternate, and Karen Winhorn will now be an alternate. She, I think was off and then she's back.
Yeah.
So we would definitely also want to thank Bill Baker for his many years of service, he needs to step down. So I think the question, was there term ending dates? There was some question between Don, if we should end it in May or July, and we wanted to keep it consistent with July with everybody else, with the board members as well as the others.
Well, the, the, the village code for the zoning board says that the terms are to coincide with the village's, uh, annual year, which is June 1 through May 31. So, somehow, it slipped through the cracks and, well, the problem, the problem started when you decided, when the, the village elections were moved from March to June, because now the, the organizational meeting happens after the start of the village's official year, whereas before, you always had, you know, so the, the, the annual meeting, the organizational meeting was in April, and the appointments went, you know, would start June 1 and, but then, things got messed up when it was decided that you didn't like to walk in the winter to politic, and so you moved it to June.
So let's move it back.
Well, you could move it back, the election's back, if you wanted to, but, so, so when, when the new zoning board was appointed and, and appointments had to be made, even though the local law says they're supposed to begin and end and coincide with the village's fiscal year, they were made to coincide with when the organizational meeting happens, which is a moving target, because usually you pick the, whatever the first Thursday, sometimes Tuesday, because of 4th of July, um, of the month of July, so there, there really is no set date that you can pick. So, either you put everybody back to, to, you know, to, the term ends on May 31, or you gotta amend the zoning code to provide that the term starts and ends whenever the organizational meeting happens to occur in any particular year. Well, you could do that, and then you, then you just gotta remember that in sometime in May, you just put out a board agenda to either reappoint new people or extend their terms or whatever. You're certain? Well, I won't say any further.
Not being argumentative, I just said it's easier when it's all part of the, like the other village board numbers, so it doesn't get fall between the cracks.
Well, that's true, but it was always, it was always easier when the election, the village election was in March, so the organizational meeting was in April.
And all of these members, Mark Nicholson, Mike O'Connor, they all, they were voted with July.
I understand that, but we, but they could, at an upcoming meeting, they could simply take a resolution to change the ending dates to May 31 of whatever year you had in there.
Okay.
You know, we could just cure that.
If they're all.
Then we don't have to amend, then we don't have to amend the, the zoning local law.
That'd be great, and then if they're all in May, we wouldn't.
And then the village clerk or someone within the village clerk's office just has to put a little tickler in May 1.
Why aren't those already written down?
Resolution, uh, May 1, yeah, resolution to, for ZBA members, you know, terms. So.
You can put it in your Outlook calendar.
So what you should do for, so for Bill Baker.
Yeah.
Until we change it, the, the local law says that his replacement, Pete Bowers, he's to fill Bill's unexpired term, so that would be the resolution today, and Bill's term expires, you have the list there.
Oh, 7 of 2023.
Yes, we don't have a specific date, because we don't know when the organizational meeting is going to be in July, so he would fill that term. Ultimately, it'll get changed in a couple of weeks to May 31 of 2023, and then, for the alternates, the alternates are just appointed for five-year stretches, so Karen would be a term of five years, or you might as well just say it's going to be May, May 31, 2027.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is it okay to do that tonight then?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll need one for Peter Bowers.
Right, the first resolution, the first resolution would be to appoint Peter Bowers as a member of the zoning board of appeals to fill the unexpired term of William Baker.
All right, so I want to entertain a motion to approve the, or a resolution to approve the appointment of Peter Bowers to fill, continuing to fill the term of Peter Baker, who is stepping down. And I believe that that would run until
July of 2023, is that correct?
Right.
Until we change it.
Or until changed.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Balke?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And next, I would ask for a resolution to approve the appointment of Karen Windham?
Windhorn.
Windhorn.
Yep.
Thank you. To a term of five years, ending May 31, 2027, as an alternate to the zoning board.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Balke?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
And so Heather, if you just want to email me your list of when the terms expire, I'll do the resolution for the next meeting or whatever to change them all.
Okay, thank you for that. We'll do it.
And I want to thank just very briefly right now, but we will do so in a little bit more formally future meeting, Bill, for his years since 1996, is it? That he has served on the
That's when I was born, 30.
On the planning board and zoning board, so.
27 years.
That's a long time and a lot of service to the community. And I deeply appreciate all of that. Thank you, a lot of changes and a lot of things that have happened here in the village, so. Wish him the best and good for that. Next, you have the budget schedule discussion?
Yes, so we just wanted to briefly go over what this year's going to look like for our budget. And I'm going to turn that over to Marcia. You have the, the little calendar in front of you to explain how this year will look.
We have more?
I gave, I gave it to you earlier, I have another.
Are we all good?
Jerry, does anyone?
I have one.
Okay, so we're kicking it off. Two weeks from tomorrow, the department heads are meeting with me and Daryl to make sure we're all generally on the same page. I'll start collecting numbers as much as I can. And then I'm proposing that we have our one budget workshop on March 8th and another, if we needed, the following week. Both of those are on Tuesdays?
At 6:00.
6:00 PM, yes, not so, please. And then March 31st is the deadline for the clerk to, what the law says is to present the budget to the board. What, that doesn't mean do like the PowerPoint thing that I'm gonna do. That just means, here you go.
I just give it to you.
The presentation comes later. Uh, actually, on Thursday, April 14th. That's, uh, could we have the public hearing before or after the presentation? I don't know. But they will both happen, the public hearing and my presentation will be on April 14th. And then the budget vote is on April 28th.
Very good.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yep.
I would recommend that the public hearing be after the presentation.
Okay.
So that public hears the proposed budget and then can come in.
Gotcha. Okay. Anyone have any questions?
No, it is very clear, thank you.
Okay.
And finally, not necessarily finding, but meeting packet submission deadline discussion. I believe that in the somewhat distant past, the packet information for the upcoming meeting was always due the Friday prior to the board meeting. Or if it was on Tuesday, I suppose, still that Friday or maybe earlier. But I know that a lot of things are being given to and are being asked to be put on the board meeting agenda. And that then causes the agenda to become not really available or certainly open to a lot of change during the week. And therefore will be very different to what is printed to the public in terms of what is expected. Now, I do believe that there are times that there will be an emergency, that there will be an item or two that has not been thought about or, you know, worked on or prepared for prior to, prior to the meeting or after.
Honestly, that just may, we need a signature, they need a signature as before the next meeting. So it may not be what you'd call an emergency, but you just need a signature.
And that may have a deadline, so that, that may be what they might call an emergency or something that cannot wait. But there are items that are being put on that can wait for me to do so. And I think that was initial. I will pass it on to you for any other comment, but. I know that that.
Just get everything in on time. You know, if you can do it, do it. Don't wait till last minute.
So establishing a, a time of Friday, I believe allows time then on Monday to be put together and given to the Herald and then put in the paper. So.
I've been sending it the week before.
Yeah, are you talking about the Friday before the meeting? Or two Fridays before the meeting? Because the problem is the Herald doesn't come out till Thursday. So people, if, if, what you just said, Daryl, is people would be, it would be published the day of the meeting.
So I send it, I still send it the week before with just the know, things I know are going to be on there. But I do try and send it again if, if there's going to be changes. But I like to post it on the website by Tuesday at the latest so that if I, you know, they can go on and with packet and everything. But I'm specifically talking about to get the information to you all in enough time so that you're able to review it before the meeting. And as well, I mean, but I've just been giving a very general agenda as much as I know the week before that.
True.
Yeah.
General.
Yes, so I know the minutes are going to be on there, I know the bills.
And there's no requirement under the open meetings law that you even publish an agenda. You just have to get notice of the time and place.
The meeting, the meeting.
That a meeting's gonna happen.
Exactly.
It's just sort of been by custom that
So then Friday before the meeting.
That's fine.
Yes, for these purposes, we're talking about.
Well, for, for purposes of the open meetings law, no, because they have to have, you have to have one week's, seven days' notice of a regularly scheduled meeting. So that's the Thursday before. And the deadline, that's a week before the meeting. And you have to get it in the Friday before then, so it's published the following Thursday. And so the problem that, that's why Heather's just been publishing bare bones agendas. Because basically, two weeks before the meeting, you're not really sure what's going to be on the agenda yet.
Yeah. But just to make sure I get the requirement.
But again, that's not, you're, you're still in compliance with the open meetings law because you're getting notice of the time and place of the meeting.
Yep. And just as long as we can try to get everybody to get the information to them Friday so that they can get it all together for us.
And, and people that really want to know, you know, they just gotta get used to going to the village website to get the most recent agenda, you know, what's actually going to be talked about.
Maybe the average could be in the Herald and what we put in there for updating.
That's a good idea, dude. That's a good idea.
How do you have to put that on there?
Yeah, I like that.
Well, that would be part of what you, it gets published every, every other weekend, Herald, yeah.
Yeah, I like that, thank you.
Way to coach here.
I know.
That's not, that's definitely not, that's you.
And I do update it, I do update it.
Anything else?
Mr. Gentleman, what have you been saying to the audience?
Could I, I, I like your suggestion, but could you also add in there for up to date? Stop by the village hall. The village has been nice enough to give me agendas at the village hall. And for the most up to date, you could stop by to pick it up if you wanted it that way?
You're more than welcome to come to the desk.
No, I mean for anybody, not just, yeah.
Very good.
Because I see you through my window peeking, and then I say, just come in, I'll give you one.
Usually I'm reading the one whole time.
I know, that's, I know.
All right, anything else? No? Then we move to DTW. Jake, wake up. It's you.
Great, first I want to thank the guys in the DTW and the sewer for the snowplowing and all the snow and ice control, pretty significant snowfalls. I'd be glad they've done a great job of maintaining, getting off the road and then clearing out the business district. Really glad they have.
They've done a fantastic job.
Yeah, John and this guy's also coming.
Hopefully you bought them some pizza or something. Hey, Carol.
I have not. I made chili once, so that was pretty good.
Oh, that was good.
Actually, they're great alarm clock.
And just one, John, one of the things we did tonight was a surplus in the vehicle we ordered in July. Was it?
Yep.
We ordered, ordered in July one of them to replace a smaller dump truck down at the plant. Finally got here, yes, two days ago.
Oh, that's early now.
Yes, so, yeah, that's not as bad as the back on track. When was that ordered? About 13 months ago?
Still hasn't been built yet.
Yeah, so, yes, not built yet, so. But no, we're happy to see that. I actually have an appointment with the DMV tomorrow to go in so we can drive it. And that'll be good. And finally, as an example of what Heather was talking about in her last item about the meeting back submissions and the deadlines and the late arrivals, I was completing a community development block grant application. Will always did these, and I didn't miss Will a lot until I started doing this. I'm just kidding, I miss Will a ton, but the, the community development block grant application, this is the first time I've seen it on here that they require a secret resolution to be submitted with as part of their environmental review checklist. So I just took the one that we did last year for the West Main Street sidewalks and it's amended as a recreation park, because I'm assuming we're doing the same work. It would have the same impact on the environment. More not, no impact on the environment. So I would respectfully request at this late hour that we, the board considers that a secret resolution. Just a quick, what I'm submitting for is sidewalks on the east side of Kircher Park. It's about 1100 feet of sidewalks there and a little over 1100 feet of sewer relining like we've done in a few areas. Then we go from East Main Street, where your son, Otto, we actually go under a walkway in 82 East Main Hill Schaefer Ross building. We, the sewer line goes under a part of the building there. I don't know exactly how that happened before me. And it turns in a wooded area and goes out. And there's, there's older played pipe, so there's some root issues now and then. So relining it to an accretive place, pipeline will, will help alleviate those concerns. So we're gonna do about 1100 feet of that too. And I'm submitting a hole as part of this grant. I originally had both sides of the sidewalk, went over to March, got both sides of the street. Kircher Park's generally in the, in the map of where we're going to do this work. And it got a little, apparently got a little greedy, I think, when we were asking for what we would ask for for going all that sidewalk and the sewer stuff. So I said, let's keep it manageable, plus for the east side and the sewer. And then next time, assuming it'll still be in there, we can look at doing either that west side of Kircher or I'd love to hop back up as soon as it's back in the map, the north and the south side of East Main Street. We'll modify for that with the community development block grants fund. But that's it, so, yeah, I was doing this this evening, trying to ramp up. I did one more, a couple more pages of things for this application for that, that work that I discussed. And I said, that's when I know that this secret resolution was needed. And this, this is due on the 18th of February, so it'd be before our next meeting. So if we could do that resolution, I'll be able to hand that in with it. And I told her about this like three weeks ago.
I saw it, it was in this LMT pick.
Just for reference, this project is, the project is, total credit's about 157 and we're requesting just under 85. So hopefully we'll, I think the most we ever got was 85. So hopefully they'll shine upon us again here. Because it really does help that, that, that program helps with a lot of the sidewalks and stuff.
Then I'll entertain a motion to approve Village Webster Board of Appeals determining that the Kircher Park East Sidewalk Replacement Sewer, CIPP project, is a type 2 action under 6 NYCRR 617.5 C2 of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, replacement, rehabilitation, or reconstruction of a structure or facility. And by definition, as a type 2 action, it's deemed to not have a significant impact on the environment and it's otherwise precluded from the environmental review under the environmental conservation law.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Balke?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes. Do you need me to sign this somewhere?
Yeah, I would love if we could have a copy of that official spell.
You want to send me this and I'll add a thing? Okay.
That would be really nice to get that.
Don, I told Jake about that. I said, he forgot the not in A's, he wasn't having.
Well, it's this late hour, is there anything else? Anybody ask for the good of yours? Yes?
I would urge our citizens to attend one, all of the events happening in our village for Fall in Love with Webster Month, put on by the members of the bid and the village. You can find the calendar on the village website and the bid website.
Yeah, I think that's going to be fine.
Yeah, the, and we, up and down the East Main Street. Okay, and then at this particular time, I would mention that our next board meeting will be February 24th. Jerry, we will miss you, but.
Before you, so what happened to LMT?
Oh, yeah, LMT, what happened?
Really, Don, you had to.
Well, you tabled it and now.
I'll just, I'll just bring it up, but just please not forget it.
Marcia went, we made her leave, we never. Marsha went, we made her leave, we never even heard from her, made her walk all the way over there, trip over the cloud.
Boy, but I'm tired.
What are we paying, Marsha, what are we paying right now?
Sneakers, darn it, she forgot her sneakers.
We're paying about $6, 1,200.
But the proposal is for 1500.
Oh.
So, it's going up, and now...
It's going down, it is going down, I will give you updated quotes, I promise.
Okay. So, you're just tabling this?
Yes.
Yes, we're definitely tabling this.
You don't even need to table it, 'cause it's not officially the resolution on there, it just says discussion, so we'll, I'll put it on the next one.
Okay.
No, it's as clear as mud to me now, it's working.
Yeah. Thank you. Good job.
And as long as the front office is happy, I guess, we'll be happy.
Doesn't matter if we understand it.
All right, uh, I'll take a motion to, uh, during the meeting, I believe, I think, 8:51, so, uh...
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.